Seven o'clock. Meeting to order. First item is the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, founded on indivisible, free liberty and justice for all.
All right. Thank you. Thank you. Yeah, if you could call the roll.
Nancy Iber.
Here.
Jessica Frank.
Here.
Erica Edlin.
Here.
Dan Gerstein.
Here.
Don Dorward.
Yep.
Tiffany Bart.
Here.
Kurt Miley.
Present.
All right. Thank you very much. Having it warm, we will move forward. The next item is public comments. If there are any public comments, please note limited to five minutes per person. And if you did have anything that you wanted to say, it's that's not on the agenda. Please step up to the microphone that's probably not working and say it there so that everybody can't hear you. That's online. That'd be great. All right, hearing none, we're gonna move forward. If it's okay with the board, after the consent agenda here, I would like to move the agenda around a little bit. I was thinking of having two of the discussion or action items, the resolutions to be moved up front. And then there's one other thing that I'll do is the update on the industrial park will move that in front of ours. So if that could be that consensus, I would appreciate that.
Your main one's fine.
All right. All right. Next, we have a consent agenda, which is the approval of the minutes of May 2nd, general fund, water and sewer invoices, bunch of temporary Class B retailer licenses. And then Jimmy B's street use permit, and we have some additional bills that are in our thing as well.
I know there is some concern about closing Highland Avenue for Jimmy B's. Has that been solidified with DPDW and everybody's all on board?
From what I know, there was some concern from Casey's, and I believe that we just moved those barricades a little bit. If that is not, is that correct?
Yeah, so we moved the location. The other question we had was about title construction itself. So that's not due to start until July, so it's being on their event.
Motion to approve the additional bills.
A second.
All right, I have a motion in a second. Are there any other questions, concerns, comments? If not, I'll call the vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you very much. Next, we're going to move on to those resolutions 2024-7 and 2024-8. Recognizing service of various past trustees, we will do. Let's do Josh's first. How's that sound? Spencer's here. All right, Josh, you want to come on up?
All right, I have 2024-8. A resolution requesting our appreciation of Dr. Haas for his years of service as village trustee. Whereas Dr. Haas has served the village as trustee for the last six years, and whereas trustee Haas was true to his value, being a caring member of the Board of Trustees while ultimately ending this dedication to fiscal discipline and common sense influences in matters of finance, public works to be public safety, where he was not a leading member in the creation of the Joint ALS Paramedic Home Program in the Ozarks County. And whereas trustee Haas played an important role as Chair of the Village of Fredonia Finance Committee, Economic Development Board, and Board of Works, and a member of the Fredonia Government Center for Mission and Joint TV Kit. And whereas trustee Haas always determined to dedicate a member of the Board of Trustees and serve community at large, the Ozarks County Supervisor of Justicery. And now therefore be it resolved that members of the Board of Village of Fredonia should sincerely thank Dr. Haas for his six years of dedicated service to the village and wish him the best of luck on his new hometown, Wisconsin Rapids. Passed in the document by the Board of the Village of Fredonia on the 16th day of May 2024.
You guys can see Ken's on footage because there's some work in it.
Yes, my mom. This is all perfect there. Not that scary.
Fine, Kiroz. You'll love this picture in the future.
You'll be in a park, it's such a funeral party.
What's up? My daddy. All right. Yes. All right. The whole entire day.
I should be out.
Yeah. I'll write it down.
Care to scooch in there and photo bump it?
Yeah, big smile.
Thank you.
Stay alive. Big smile. All right. Absolutely. About everything. She got money. Yeah. There you go. Thank you very much. Congratulations, buddy. Another one. Gonna miss you right away, this is gonna be a funny person. Thank you very much. Good luck.
By the way, I'd like to move to pass Resolution 2408.
All right, I have a motion to pass resolution. Was it 2408?
Who made the motion?
I'm, well, he made the motion.
That's what I meant.
Yeah. This is gonna be a fun one tonight.
We have a motion.
Yeah. All right, I have a motion in a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank goodness, motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Josh. Appreciate Haas family for all of his dedication to this village, his community. He was Ozaki, Ozaki County, absolutely. He was instrumental to doing a lot of things and is one of the big reasons that I'm sitting here today. So, thank you very much. We will miss you. We already miss you. All right. You want me to read the resolution? Do I need to read the resolution? Okay. Yeah, or we could wait until later on too, to see if he shows up.
Yeah.
No, that's a shame. But.
I don't think he's going to.
Yeah. All right. So next we have motion to approve Resolution 2024-07, recognizing Bruce Pappy for his years of service as village trustee. It reads, whereas Bruce Pappy has served the village as trustee for the last two years, and whereas trustee Pappy used his background as an electrician and in home care to assist in a variety of public works and public safety initiatives. And whereas trustee Pappy played an important role as Chair of the Village of Fredonia Public Works and Public Safety Committees during which the joint ALS Paramedic Program was initiated and significant investments in public works remain. And whereas trustee Pappy was always an outspoken and passionate member of the Board of Trustees regardless of his position, and will continue this public service as the Ozaki County Supervisor of District Two. Now therefore be it resolved that the members of the Board of the Village of Fredonia wish to sincerely thank Bruce Pappy for his two years of dedicated service to the village and wish him best of luck as our newest county board supervisor. Passed and adopted by the Village Board of the Village of Fredonia on the 16th day of May 2024. So looking for a motion to approve that resolution.
I motion to approve the Resolution 2024-07, recognizing Bruce Pappy.
A second.
Okay, I have a motion in a second. Call the question. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, trustee Pappy. All right. We will kind of circle back now and we will go to the presentations and we'll start with Khrushak on the industrial park update.
We have started our mass excavation for good old though. You guys can pass around some of the pictures. This is still not doing their excavation of all the building we in building. All the dirt. We're not starting on the paperwork yet. We're anticipating it's being there by a couple of weeks.
Sure.
We need all the billable to the proper areas, so we get a lot of dirt to move there.
Makes sense.
We'll pass, you guys can pass around the schedule. You guys might not see our schedule. It's right there. We're a little bit behind. Not really concerned about the schedule. We'll come back for it.
Sure.
We're a little bit ahead of the weather. The weather put us back a little bit, so every day it rains, we lose three days out, moving it down. So that's about the only thing I got to go with.
You mean you don't, you don't like to move slop? You like to move actual dry fill or?
We're gonna move it when it comes back to the place.
Yeah, makes sense to me.
They're all separate.
Well, you're, what you've done so far has certainly sparked interest in the community. We've been hearing all sorts of people excited. Yeah, definitely noticed. So thank you. And thank you for getting to work on it right away. We sincerely appreciate that.
Yeah, we'll keep up, we'll go along with it as weather permits here.
Okay. Anything unexpected that you've come across so far?
Move late. This is another quick step.
Yeah.
We're anticipating starting three weeks ahead of what we started with the weather put us back.
Yeah.
Take it again.
And no five foot boulders or anything like that?
Not yet. We don't know that. But otherwise everything all good.
Good.
I can't let it all.
Good.
I'll just add quick. So in the, in the original TID plans that you all adopted when you created the TID, you had planned on adding a mill and overlay to Tower Drive and that curve there of the industrial park. So because we came so much under our bid, we've asked Isaac with Strand to work with Khrushak on some sort of change order to add that project in there if it can fit our budget. So just be aware that that may be coming before you.
Awesome.
They don't get any wood and color with their base.
Yeah. And that's amazing what those machines can do, right?
Yeah, really.
I'm trying not to get distracted today. I was driving by and I was like, wow.
It actually depresses seeing the whole field stripped off like that.
Yeah.
Regrading everything.
Yeah.
It'd be a beautiful sight.
Yeah, should be. It's funny, you never know what you're gonna find under there though. I have an excavation of a project up in Batavia and they were digging the basement and out came like a, you know, just an absolutely gigantic boulder. They had to get a bigger machine in there to excavate it and stuff. So hopefully we don't run into any of that stuff here.
We don't come across any Indian burial grounds or anything.
And if you do, please don't say anything. Keep that to yourself. That'd be outstanding.
Consider our hero. For me.
Perfect. Awesome.
You'll be on the job. If you guys have any questions, feel free to reach out to me.
Great.
I'm always available.
Thank you. Thank you so much, sir. Appreciate it. Thank you for coming. All right. Exciting to see things moving forward there. All right, next we're gonna go. Yeah, go give him.
I'm sure he does.
Probably does.
Maybe.
Mm-hmm. All right, next we will move on to the LRS tax incremental finance basics and TID number three update. Hello.
Hi.
How's it going?
I'm Lisa Trubatowski. I am one of the village's municipal advisors and I was asked to come tonight to do a very, very basic tax incremental finance and then give an update on your TID three. So there are three packets that I gave you. One is the presentation that we will be going through and then two other packets. We're gonna discuss two different scenarios. And they're really just the tables that are in the presentation, but bar nerds, so it'd be a trouble reading the numbers in the presentation. You can refer to those packets. So if you want to go to the first page of the presentation. We have a.
The most. Oh.
Oh, is it too far away?
Why don't you put a piece of paper under the most?
There it is.
So starting with the fundamentals, when you create a TID, the base value of the parcels that are within the TID district, those stay with the various taxing jurisdictions. So the values of those and the tax that money will go to the various jurisdictions. It's the increment that is generated after that that stays within that TID district. And then at the end of the TID life, when you either close it early or it runs into its max life, that value then is distributed throughout the various taxing jurisdictions and then they're getting taxed and that money goes back to the taxing jurisdictions. So we have an example on the next page to demonstrate this. So if we look at that baseline property value, let's say that was a thousand, just to keep this easy math, if that baseline property value of the values in the district was a thousand dollars, the local would get six dollars and fifty cents, county would get four dollars, school would get seven fifty, and the tech would get two. Let's say the TID then grew in value another thousand dollars. The full twenty dollars would stay within that TID fund to be able to pay for any project costs, administration costs, any developer incentives or anything else that you're expensing within the TID. Going on to the next page.
Does that make sense, everybody?
So the reason to use TID is that it really takes all because you keep that money from all the taxing jurisdictions. You're able to use that money to make payments towards any debt when you're putting in infrastructure or utilities to incentivize developers to develop their incentives and that really promotes the economic development or redevelopment and then promotes cooperation between public and private sectors. So there are various types of TID districts. The TID three is an industrial TID, so it has a max life of twenty years. And at least fifty percent of that district had to be zoned and suitable for industrial development. And with an industrial TID, you are not allowed to have newly planted residential within that district during creation. So there are eligible project costs that you can do within a TID and that, like you talked, you could fund infrastructure and utility improvements. You could have developer incentives, any relocation, various cash grants for those developers. You pay professional services, whether it's auditors, LRS, even staff time. There's expenses that are generated through that that the TID can pay for. And then there's this half mile radius around the district where you can pay for some costs outside of the district as long as any of those costs are directly related to the TID. And there are some ineligible project costs and that includes any municipal type building funding and certain other things like that. On the next page, we'll talk about the expenditure period. So even though the max life of an industrial TID is twenty years, there's an expenditure period that ends five years before that max life. So fifteen years where you can incur expenses or obligation for those revenues to pay anything. So after that fifteen years, you can't generate new expenditures, like you can't issue debt for projects after that fifteen year mark.
So basically like if after the fifteen year mark, if we weren't completed with the road, we couldn't do any more road because that that would be, you know, past that period.
Expenses, but if you've already incurred those expenses, you can continue to pay for them after that fifteen year mark up until twenty years, or there is an extension that you can do for three years after that max life. And we'll talk about that in a little bit. So the TID remains open for that max life unless all the obligations are paid for and there's positive cash flow, you are able to close a TID early and you're required to close the TID if that is the case. And then at closure, if there's any remaining funds, those are split between the various jurisdictions on a proportionality basis. And then any unreimbursed project costs become a general liability of municipalities. So if you do not have generating enough tax increment revenue to pay your obligations, all of that becomes an obligation of the municipality. So the excess funds get split to the various taxing jurisdictions, but any costs that are not paid for stay with the municipality. They don't get spread out through the other various taxing jurisdictions. So that's something important to keep in mind as we look at the two scenarios that we're gonna go through. So for tax incremental district number three, like we've mentioned, this is an industrial TID and that was created in 2021. The expenditure period of fifteen years ends in 2036. And with the twenty year max life, the increment is collected through 2042. As mentioned, it is eligible for a standard three year extension and that does require an approval from the Joint Review Board by resolution if you would need to do that. So that would be a case where if you haven't in that twenty years paid for all of those obligations, you are able to extend and collect increment for additional three years to pay for those obligations. So the current status of this TID is the incremental value as of 1123 is seventeen point five million. However, there was an adjustment that the Department of Revenue made that was over seven million dollars. And that was added to correct something from 2022. That, so you see that in 2023, that will be removed in 2024. And then the total TID increment value divided by the total municipality equalized value cannot exceed twelve percent when you're creating a TID. So currently this TID is at six point two eight percent. So as you get development in there and if that development exceeds a twelve percent, then you wouldn't be able to create another TID until you close that this current district. Does that make sense?
Mm-hmm.
And as we're gonna see, we are then need to see additional increment value within the TID than what is currently projected or development agreements or what is assumed to be so that you are generating sufficient revenue to pay the debt payment. Because as of 2028, based on what we have right now, you will not be generating enough increment value to pay all of the debt payments. So at that point, you either have to levy tax to make those payments or possibly do some sort of interplon loan to cover if you know that you're gonna have value in the future and it'll easily pay that back.
So, Khrushak, can you just touch on the equalized value? Because that was the thing that sent you?
Yep. So without knowing what the assessment ratio is, you did send me the assessed value. If I use the 2023 assessed ratio, that six point two eight percent would go down to about five percent. So as you get growth and that equalized value gets higher than that percentage of the total municipal equalized value would get smaller. So like I said, we have two scenarios that we're gonna run through. Scenario one is with the development assumptions that are basically that either there's development agreements or it's assumed. These are very conservative assumptions. So you have seen a lot of attraction within this TID, so it's hopeful that you will see additional development here, but you do need to see large development and we'll run through that in scenario two. So just keep in mind with this scenario one, you're looking at about twenty-two point four million of development assumptions. That transfers over to the next page. Those values. Yep. Transfers over to this tax increment projection. So starting on the left, it's by year. You see where you have the construction year and this is when the value is added. So throughout the year, you're having this construction, you get this toll. Then the following year, that construction is valued and it will be as a one one of that year. So you, for this example, 2023, or let's do 2024, there's two hundred and fifty thousand of development in the TID. It's valued as of 112025. You would see revenue on that in 2025. There's always a couple of year lag from development to when you actually see the revenue from that development. Wanting to note that this is an industrial TID, so it's assumed that you would have a lot of manufacturing within the TID and manufacturing is state assessed and we typically see depreciation on that. So the economic change in here, we have an assumed negative one percent appreciation factor. So that's where you see in the middle of the page, the negative numbers. So we're assuming that those assessed values will depreciate, will go down and it's by the negative one percent. However, right currently, you just have one development that is manufacturing within the TID. So if we took out that negative adjustment, that would increase the increment revenue generated by almost four hundred and fifty thousand. However, that is throughout the whole period, that's twenty year period of the TID. So that is not enough to cut, to make up for where in 2028, you won't be able to generate enough revenue to cover your debt payments. And I do want to mention too, if you look at the tax rate, you notice that it is decreasing and that is because equalized the market value has been increasing faster than municipalities are able to increase their levies. Because levy increase is based off of your net new construction. So it's not based off of that economic growth. It has to be new buildings, new infrastructure stuff valued on that. So on the next page, through the first scenario, we take this increment value and put it into this cash flow. So again, it goes chronologically, top to bottom. Revenues are in that orange section. So first is that tax increment revenue. Then we have some investment, income, some proceeds of debt. And then some rent, previous year, you had some rental of land income and then land sale revenue. There is with your 2024 bonds, you did have some debt premium and that premium was put into a debt service reserve fund that will pay for all of 2025 interest payment on the debt and a portion of 2026. So then in the green section, these are your expenditures. You have two state trust fund loans and then that 2024 debt issue that we had. Note that one option we can talk about is restructuring debt. The state trust fund loans are callable at any time between January 1st to August 31st. You just have to do a thirty day written notice. So something to look at may be re-financing those maybe into an open market security depending on where interest rates are at. Currently, the state trust fund loan is at a six percent rate. Then other expenditures are your capital outlay projects, some public works expenses. And then related to the 2024 debt issue, there was your finance related costs, so your cost of issuance that you had to pay for through the debt. Then in the brown area, we have balances. So the first column is annually, are you positive or negative cash flowing? Then the middle section is a cumulative balance. And the final is what your outstanding debt is.
Oh, Rick.
Okay. So in this one, if you go down to 2028, that cumulative balance is negative. So that is the year that we're talking about where you aren't generating enough or it's predicted that you wouldn't generate enough increment value to make your debt payments and that continues throughout the life of the TID.
You know, it's a good major.
I'm sorry?
That's based on what we have sold right there.
And then a few future projections based off of some developer agreements that you have.
Right.
And so. Right. Currently, yes, what you're projecting is.
So when we sell that big person, yeah, something big.
On a conservative assumption too.
That was gonna be my question. So they're, they're using the total values that they projected, correct?
They're using the minimum value guarantees that they have.
Okay.
A great example to use is Greatland Electric. A great example to use is Greatland Electric. Uh, so as we know, they should be building here fairly soon on Milwaukee Streets with their uh office slash little manufacturers. We'll get both that'll have for their electrician business. Realistically, with will a brand new building like that on two acres be only two hundred and seventy thousand dollars? Probably not, right? We're gonna assume it will be worth at least a little bit more than that, but their bare minimum, and again, to make our numbers work is that two fifty. So we're hopeful that as they get built and come in and become entire.
So the second scenario is we determine how much more value needs to be added to make your debt payments and cash flow positive. So in this example, uh, the construction would need to happen in two thousand and twenty six cause we talked about that way at times. So two thousand and twenty six construction valued in two thousand and twenty seven, receive revenue in two thousand and twenty eight. So we're assuming you need approximately eleven million dollars of additional development within the TID to make that positive cash flow that we'll see.
Starting in two thousand and twenty eight?
In two thousand and twenty. It is positive right now, but the focus here is generating enough so that two thousand and twenty eight is not negative. So on the following page, we have that tax increment projection again. Um, we went through the negative uh appreciation factor, the one um development that is state assessed. Um, in this case, without that negative adjustment, again, it would only increase revenues by just over four hundred thousand. Um, about six hundred thousand. And uh, so that's still that would still be good. Um, you would eat in that case, that eleven million um development assumption would be able to go down to seven point five million. So have we not have that negative appreciation factor, you would need less than development. But again, we wanna be conservative because if you get a large development and it's manufacturing and it's state assessed, you'd likely see some um appreciation in that. Uh, and then just noting that based on that seven point five million, if that was the case, then that total tax increment revenue generator would be about seven point four million versus the seven point six shown here. So having this flow through to the cash flow. Uh, again, we talked about revenues, the expenditures and the focus here, again, if you wanna go um all the way to the right, the balances in two thousand and twenty eight, we talked about this is basically minimum, you would only be positive three hundred and forty dollars in in this scenario, assuming all of these assumptions happen as. So you do need to see some larger development um within the TID and by two thousand and twenty six to make sure that your cash flowing positive and able to make those debt payments so that you're not having to levy tax to make those payments or do any sort of inner fund loan.
Basically, I have you touch on just cause the this is a sore subject for the board. So you mentioned a lot about um the state assessed manufacturing. So as we know, that maybe didn't uh happen the way it should have in years past here. So as these new businesses develop, what are the steps and timelines on the calendar that we can make sure that the state is doing their due diligence and our our private property owners are recording that this new construction is happening?
What the state processes or?
I'm saying, cause it's it's falls on the the developers to let the state know.
Yep, they have to file a check of course. So that the state um assesses that in the east, but I think in October. Um, but it's, yeah, it's really on the developer accurately fill that out and for the state to do their job correctly, which obviously in the state was made a very large mistake, that seven million of value that is now needing to be adjusted for two thousand and twenty in two thousand and twenty three to make up two thousand and twenty two and then you're gonna see a negative um in two thousand and twenty four.
So then if the state hadn't made that seven point three million dollar mistake, we wouldn't have, we wouldn't be dealing with scenario one at all.
You would still be dealing with it. You would have just seen that in two thousand and twenty two, it would have been correct. Then two thousand and twenty three, two thousand and twenty four would have been falling in line. Um, let's say there was no additional development, it would continue to be the same or some depreciated it state assessed. Uh, so the scenario doesn't really change, it's just you're seeing this large increase in value for one year and then it's gonna drop back down. So they're correcting for one year. So you just didn't get the revenue in the correct year in two thousand and twenty two that you receive her in two thousand and twenty three. And then it's gonna correct again in one twenty four and then you should see it stabilized after that.
For those who don't know, we have three parcels left to sell. We have that corner lot, um, the corner of Milwaukee and um, that is uh the former former site that I had family. We still have about two three acre lot on the west side, wants to be innovation drive. Next to some of the shops that we plan and maybe that big corner chunk with fifteen acre along kind of fifty seven. And that's where, as I've emphasized with you guys in the past, I mean, now that's the last big remaining chunk, we really should save it for that. Primary, you know, big batch that was.
Is that, that, are you referring to that Phillips site? Yeah, um, is that in that tip? I didn't know if you're included that in there.
Yeah, it's part of the. Probably the vacant site.
Yeah, I mean, I, not that I want to rely on numbers or, you know, projections or whatever, but I too have a really hard time just looking at some of these different projections for some of these projects and thinking that, you know, ideal tree service is only gonna have a hundred and fifty thousand dollar building. I mean, it costs more than that to build the building, you know, you know what I'm saying? So some of those things are gonna go up. Um, again, it's it's smart to rely on conservative numbers for your estimates so that you're not you're not chasing something, but um I think that I mean, that we know what we have to do, right? Now we just need to figure out how to get there. So.
Usually when working with your developers as they purchase property or whatever, you allow them to be somewhat conservative in their estimates so that you're pleasantly surprised.
Absolutely.
We don't, everybody except above the success, right?
Well, I think, I mean, obviously you look at it and the road going in is the biggest expense, right? I mean, so. But one could argue that without any of the road going in, we were never gonna get people in here anyway. So what's the point, you know? So. So anybody?
We're moving dirt now.
Moving dirt.
I started to wonder, there's about two weeks they hadn't moved a shovel.
I'll just add quick. So we had an economic development meeting today and uh we meet quarterly with all of the municipal administrators and economic development directors. And I think we got comments, I'll tell you, and everybody drove past and excited a lot. I was like, what's going on? I've been telling you. You know, I I I felt proud of it, to share all the exciting stuff that we were going on. So just know that, you know, we're, it's not just getting recognized here in the village, but it's getting recognized around the county as well.
Just tell them we're making a good dog.
Take the people a meth on, I think. So now we just have to work on, like Chris was saying, that big catch. And I think that, you know, we have to work with our, with our realtors and our commercial spot to really start marketing this stuff and not just putting blips on the map and spreading the word, right? Anytime you're having conversations, if you're talking to anybody, hey, what's going on here? You know, we all kinda know people and you never know what could happen. I mean, Dance Studio is a great, and it's a great uh example of that where I'm looking for land. Oh, are you really? You know what I mean? And then also we got eight hundred to one point five million in increments. So those things can't happen, just keep your eyes and ears open and anybody spread the word.
Maybe when the economy gets a little better, a little.
I could certainly spur some things on. Are there any questions about the TIF district or TID district in general, just things that nobody knew about? That anybody wanted to ask questions now is the chance, cause if you ask me, I'm gonna say we should talk to others. So.
So we we keep talking about the, you know, twenty twenty six is kind of twenty twenty seven a pivotal year. What happens if we don't get those lots sold until, let's just say, two thousand and twenty eight?
That's where you
And that pushes out.
That, right, you would need to either levy a tax for that debt payment to make it or do an inter fund loan to make it until you start generating um the enough revenue to cover the debt payments. Or restructure, like we talked about the state trust on loans, you could try the two thousand and twenty four bonds um are callable and maturities starting two thousand and thirty three. So they were issued on a tax exempt basis, so you can do it in that time period. So starting April first two thousand and thirty two for the maturities, April first two thousand and thirty three and thereafter, you can refine and set that time. Um, if you do an advanced refunding, you would be issuing it as a taxable, which comes at a greater cost, um higher interest rates typically. Uh, so we wouldn't wanna see that, but the state trust fund loans, depending where interest rates are at, um possibly paying those off and issuing like an open market security and see if that you could maybe delay some payments if need be. Um, so that is an option we could look at. There might be an increased cost um to that, but to be able to um delay some payments um for a couple of years and that's something you can continually evaluate. We do update this on an annual basis. Um, and it's presented to your annual uh joint review board. So it's something that is continuously monitored.
So something, I'm just looking back at the scenario one here and I'm looking at the development assumptions. Are these assuming all of these? Is the two thousand and twenty eight part where we have to start thinking about levying or doing inter department loans? Is that assuming all of these things get done on the same time periods that they're showing?
And assuming, right, we show the tax rate frozen at fifteen dollars and ten cents, I believe it was. Um, yeah. Uh, you could see that decrease as well, like I explained how um the market value is increasing faster than the net new construction of municipality where they can increase the levy. So you're seeing that decrease. Um, so you could continue to see that decrease, but maybe not as much of the economic depreciation factor too. So it can, it all changes every year and it's something to continue to evaluate. But should you have uh like the seven point five million or?
That's your paperboard?
Yep, that um in earlier projections that we had, so when we issued uh the two thousand and twenty four A uh G O bonds, that was actually, I don't know if it's like twenty twenty five or year prior. So having some of that ahead of time, you're generating increment on that sooner. Um, and vice versa, you see that delayed, that's only gonna hurt more cause you're not generating um increment on that until later.
Well, that's what I was gonna say with the the dance studio too, cause they're building late this year into early next year and we have it that's two thousand and twenty six. Is that what we're recognizing that revenue? Is that how that's working? Is that why we have that there?
We have that as the construction year.
To your point, yes, they're aggressive, right? They can start it earlier, it's great, but.
Yeah, so that should help that at least a little bit, cause we'd have more. Okay, okay. I just wanted to be clear.
Yep, so have it, let's say they do finish in two thousand and twenty five, you'll be receiving increment revenue down in two thousand and twenty seven rather than um it's in two thousand and twenty six, so that would be two thousand and twenty eight.
So that could possibly get us.
Yeah, sooner, that's better because you're generating more increment revenue sooner on that, which only helps. Um, but the opposite to if anything's delayed, that would.
I'd say any other uh project or whether it's residential or what, uh, the January first is the really date, the date that cuts everything from now and then next year. Whenever it's completed by January twenty first of say twenty three, it's put on the rolls in two thousand and twenty four and gets um us, it gets collected in two thousand and twenty five. So if we're talking about twenty six, you got um it was done by January twenty twenty six. Then it would be twenty eight when we start collecting.
Yeah, if anything throughout twenty six is constructed, the value is as of one one twenty seven, so that right, you receive the revenue. So that two thousand and twenty eight year is key here to, you need to see a lot more development by two thousand and twenty six or within two thousand and twenty six to receive the enough revenue in two thousand and twenty eight to cover those debt payments. And that's assuming all of these other things stay true.
Does that make sense to everybody? Do we have any other questions for Lisa? All right. Well, we thank you so much for coming and I'm sure we'll have plenty of questions um moving forward. Still feel like I have questions, but that's just, I always have questions. That's right. All right. Thank you so much. Appreciate it. All right. We will move on then if that's. All right, we'll move on to reports on the village committees. Uh, first is the planning commission and we met on May sixth. We had a pretty uh packed meeting, which was good. Um, we had the zoning code change, so we had a public hearing that was to um talk about the um floodplain or the FEMA floodplain or ordinance change. Um, that will be discussed a little bit later today. Um, no one had really anything to say about it. So it's pretty quick and easy. Um, that was recommended obviously uh to us to take a look at today. Then there was a discussion and uh possible recommendation to us on the CSM two thousand and twenty four dash oh two, which we'll be looking at tonight as well. And that was specifically for the dance studio and creating their parcel within the TIF district. Uh, and then we also looked at a site plan for Port Washington State Bank. So I guess anybody that doesn't know, um, Port Washington State Bank is going to be, oh wait, we knew this as of last meeting, never mind. You guys know that they're expanding and that's gonna be really exciting. So the planning commission uh voted to approve that expansion and that plan without any changes, looks really, really neat. And it's gonna be a great asset for the community. It's gonna be, you know, you think about the first thing that you really see when you come in from the east, so that'll be really good. And then uh finally, we talked about a fence permit application uh for Noins. They're looking at doing a little bit of storage in on their property and uh kinda asked them to go back to the drawing board, I guess, a little bit. We didn't really feel that it was an actual fence that was being built. So they're gonna be coming for some sort of building, commercial building permit application.
Yeah, so we actually ended up uh researching our code a little bit more. They can apply for a conditional use for outdoor storage. And that specifically gets approved by the plant commission. So you guys will, we'll probably see that in your next meeting.
Oh, excellent. Uh, and then obviously the LED signage thing, we're still working on that and taking a look at that, uh that'll be on a future agenda as well. So it was a good meeting, uh lots going on in the village and looking forward to even more stuff. Are there any questions of me? If not, we will move on to the public works committee chair.
Um, sorry, we had uh, we held a meeting that was basically a an introduction to public first committee. Uh, before I forget, we're planning on the next meeting to include a uh run through the wastewater shortage wastewater treatment plant facilities. So that when we start talking about this in a digestion or whatever, we'll have a picture in our mind to see where it is and kinda where it does and other things. So that helps inform some of our, our decisions. Um, we started out, we had uh that's right, I didn't, I didn't do that minutes yet. I thought I would remember all this. Um. I thought I would remember all this. Um.
You want me to help you out?
Did you guys do road surveys?
Uh no, that's.
So we looked at road maintenance. We we looked at road maintenance and talked about the study we did.
Okay, I got now. Um. We looked at uh at the road road maintenance schedule um which were prioritized projects and selection of different kinds of projects. Um and then we looked at the uh equipment replacement schedule which uh is has everything from soup to nuts on the on a list and a year that they were bought and and whatever we're thinking of revamping that a little bit. It doesn't really make much sense to see what the cost of a a unit that was thirty two years old or something was because that gives no info in information to the uh the purchase of new one. And then uh yeah, we look we looked at uh.
See, guys, the struggle is real.
Wastewater. I mean, that was a lot of it.
Yeah, Phil Phil said that uh I went through and explained some of their, most of their suggestions for the next chunk of upgrades at uh wastewater treatment plant. And uh so we added a few things and changed a few things and whatever for him to consider. Um now he's going to go and actually throw out some engineering or whatever. Uh and bring it and say, well, what do you think so far or whatever? So we're working along those lines. Um the uh uh the the short tail estimate on what we're talking about as far as money is um somewhere around five, four point five million, five million. So um I tend to think that that's going to be pretty expensive when we're actually dealing for most part, we're dealing with concrete tanks in the ground and plumbing and valves and pumps and things of this nature, but uh um I can't see how I was gonna run five million dollars, but we'll we'll see. Um and then we uh looked at did we look at the the property number?
Yes.
We just, that was a um um uh you were, yeah, he answered up and he had mentioned that uh he had concerns about the amount of money that we have in the general fund that's not assigned. Um I I once you stayed right side about this this way too. It's really not a bunch of money that's just sitting on a shelf and we never use it. Um it performs, it performs a function for the village. By when we just now went out for bonds, we had a big chunk of money unallocated in reserve, which the investor liked like that. And it's probably saved us maybe somewhere between point one and point two um interest points um to to have that money available for the ups and downs or whatever. Um it's not only that, it's it helps with writing grants and things of that nature too. They see that we have uh a possibility to cover what if something doesn't go correct. Um now, so it's it's not that, it's not doing anything. Um it serves a couple of purposes which are fairly invisible, but they pop up every once in a while because an investor asks about it or the D N R has a box that you gotta check or whatever in a in a grant. But then after that, it was uh it was brought up at the end of the um meeting under new new uh things to think about was uh the possible purchase of the uh of a parcel of land next to the new uh um so we'll be talking about that in the future. Um other than that, I think I covered pretty much all of it.
If you don't mind, I'll I'll just add for the wastewater treatment plant stuff. So everybody's kind of kept up to date. So since that meeting, um we asked Strand to come up with that kind of needs versus wants based on all the equipment that we talked about. So we'll be planning on reviewing that. That'll give us a more solid number. That five million dollar number that they estimated was if we got got everything that we wanted, right? Um we kicked that number over to Ellers Lisa, who was just with us to say, okay, what if we did need five million dollars through the clean water fund loan? What would that look like for our sewer rates? Um and it would be significant. I'm not gonna lie to you. We we would require a significant increase in our rates. And so before we go down that path, they really recommended doing a a sewer rate study. It sounds like the village did a water study not too long ago, but we didn't do a sewer study. And so if we're gonna be considering a an investment like this, it's probably about time that we do a study like that. And so they actually just sent us a proposal tonight, which I forwarded over to you, Don. Um and then so we plan on discussing that at a future meeting.
I think it's important too to note, and I think this is where where I came into that meeting as well. Um this wastewater treatment plant upgrade that that we've been talking about for years has assuming that we have village growth, right? And that we get to, what is it? That three?
Three thousand.
Three thousand ish population. Um currently twenty five hundred, something around there. Does that sound right?
Twenty three, I thought.
Yeah. So so one of the questions I had is, oh my gosh, when do we need to do this? Is this like a but the answer is no. I mean, obviously some things are starting to break and those things need to be replaced and things like that, but a full-fledged um you know, wastewater treatment plant overhaul, we're not quite there yet. So this isn't a pull the trigger on something tomorrow.
Yeah, they also had a recommendation, which I don't know if they'll be talking about that in committee first or if they'll put their recommendation on the next board meeting. Um as far as how to uh more gently sneak up to a higher sewer rate over a short period of time rather than just saying, well, we need twenty seven percent more than whatever or fifty seven or whatever Port Washington was doing. You you can't do that to your taxpayers. To your rate here, you you just can't do that.
And that's the value of doing that super study because we don't want to be Port Washington who has to jackers up fifty percent in one year. Uh it's it should help us to avoid that. Yeah.
Excellent. Why did Port Washington have to do that? We don't.
And they kept on getting put things put off. Oh, can we do this later? And the D N R would say, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Did they have to upgrade their water system?
Yeah.
They had almost rebuilt.
They rebuilt or built new treats plants. And I had to pay for it out of their utility and that required a fee increase to their utility users.
Hmm.
That was a nice surprise for them.
Surprise. We don't wanna, we don't like surprises.
Um so any questions on that?
I'm curious about the road plans, the reconstruction plans and how that's gonna go. Um I know we did the road survey last summer, I think it was.
Mm hmm.
Well, I think we have, we have like the top nine for reconstruction, utilities and pavement and then only pavement. And what we're trying to do is trying to figure out how the number one is Highland. And then I think the next one is we talk about one that we can actually, your second priority is actually one that we can include in our T I D.
Yeah, yeah, that's the tower drive and industrial.
Mm hmm. So that's our second top priority. And then we're trying to figure out how we can budget them as well.
Yeah. So to answer your question, uh if I could wave a magic wand, uh that last year's study was a good first step for us to identify those main main priorities. But beyond that, we really should have a spreadsheet that this every single road in our municipality, right? And prioritize all of that. So even if we're not doing one for five years down the road, we at least know what's the next one. Um and we will take it account, same things we did in the study, the Pacer rating, the quality of the utilities, if they have the traffic.
And we do have a list, start of a list.
Start of it. And I think, you know, to to Don's point about the tour on the next, I mean, I encourage all of you to come, you know, as many of you can.
According to what Erica's told us, it's almost like a biohazard.
Yeah. That's Eric for you.
Yeah, really. Yeah, really. We had good housekeeping down there.
Right. So I I would just say it'd be good. Yeah, just.
Yeah.
It'd be good for everybody to take a look at it so that they kind of. Yeah. All right. Anything else for the chair of public works? All right. Thank you, Don. We'll move on to the joint fire and EMS committee. That'd be Kurt.
So we had the all four of us jurisdictions there, uh village of Fredonia, town of Fredonia, village of uh Belgium and town of Belgium. And um I I think we had a pretty good discussion. I think we were all on the same page. That uh we uh needed to make this thing work. Um and that uh EMS and uh the paramedic program, uh we needed to stick together on that because um I think Tom, the uh the uh administrator, not administrator, I'm sorry, the uh president of the town of Belgium said if 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 it's your son or it's your daughter or your your mother that needs EMS service, you know, the ambulance needs to be there. We need to make that work. So um so we we all wanted to stick together, so I thought that was pretty uh positive. And then there was a discussion of uh referendums. Because at the there needed to be money raised for this project uh because EMS and paramedic costs have gone up over the years, you know. Um you know, you gotta train the uh train uh these individuals at at their craft. Uh I mean, and and the other thing is, is that the the supplies and the equipment at the the cost of that has gone up. So each jurisdiction was discussing uh that a referendum was likely, uh EMS paramedic referendum. And possibly coming up this fall. And some people were concerned about that because uh with referendums like this, you usually don't do it in a fall referendum. It's usually done on a spring referendum. But um there is a uh I think uh we need, the funds are needed um and uh in in a quick fashion. And so a fall referendum, I think, would probably be best. But we could discuss that further um here for our our purposes at another meeting. Um you know, I guess the drawbacks of a fall referendum was would be that you know, um you have a presidential race and you have people that normally don't vote on these things. They're just, you know, they're there for once in a four year thing. So whereas the the uh positive points of having a in a spring referendum is that you have usually voters that are dedicated and and are more are are well informed. So but the immediacy, I think, um probably calls for a fall referendum. But like I said, this board could discuss that at another venture. If they probably next meeting would probably be appropriate, so.
Okay.
I think that's about it. Do you remember anything else from that meeting, Don?
Yeah, it's about it.
Yeah.
There's a couple next steps that'll be coming before you guys referendum or not. Uh there's cleanup language to our agreement that the village of Belgium and us are working on. Um so you'll see that come before you. Um the the that committee is planning on meeting, I think, in a month or so.
Third Wednesday. Yes, third Wednesday, seven.
So that with that committee meets, uh they're gonna have uh I believe an attorney from the town of Belgium. And then we've asked Ellers to join in on that conversation too, so you can walk us through that referendum stuff. Um so I would let that meeting happen first and then I would I would foresee it, that question, then coming to each of the municipalities of how they want to do it, what's they ask, you know, that kind of stuff. So.
Oh, yeah, that that yeah, that sounds reasonable. Yeah, sure. So then it would be sometime in July.
Yeah, the the deadline to get something on the November ballot is August, so you have to approve that language by then.
All right. For any other question? Thank you.
Yeah, the the fine tuning the agreement that they're talking about was something that was expected right from the start. And you probably be familiar with that too, when when we first uh first number of meetings and where we set up all of these rules and relationships between and responsibilities and percentages and whatever. Um it was realized that, well, this isn't perfect and yes, we know, but we're going to be fine tuning this as we go along. This uh we're we're expecting that we will be doing a good deal of that as a first revision. Um which will each will come to each municipality to uh approve the new agreement. Which will be just a a a refined old agreement, but and that'll be good. That'll that'll smooth a lot of the differences between some of the municipalities.
All right. Any other questions for our joint fire and EMS committee chair? Thank you, sir. We'll move on. We'll move on to the one hundred and fiftieth anniversary subcommittee.
Well, this is a little bit more fun sometimes. We met this week again and it had a very productive meeting. Uh we're getting into the final stages. We're still fine tuning the commemorative book, um which we're getting some really good information and feedback from local citizens that have been here for a while. We've had a chance to work with the historical societies in the area to get some old pictures, which is fantastic. And it's really fun to see what the town looked like in nineteen twenty seven, nineteen oh four. It's it's great. Um so we are getting down to the end of it. We're gonna continue to meet a little bit more frequently. We have Marshall Leighton with us discussing the parade and security for that. So we're all set on that. Um parade route is all set up. We are just jamming away. It's it's getting really exciting. Watch for social media blast, please, and share away. And let's make this an event to remember.
Yay.
Super excited.
Yeah.
Fifty years.
Four hundred and fifty years.
Can we look up online all the events in order? We are.
For the day?
Or do you guys have that?
Are you talking about like the summer events in general or are they?
No.
Lovely day of the hundred and fifty.
Yeah, it's on the social media event. Administrator drinking.
We're about for our steak heads around. Okay, I'm like that.
I'll point out, um we're in the process of putting together a flyer. Do you have that?
Or which flyer? The the mailer one?
Yeah.
Well, I was gonna talk about that later, but you can talk about it now if you want to.
Oh, do you have it though?
I do.
I printed one down.
Oh.
Let me go to my filings.
Do you have the newest one?
No.
No, you don't. Why don't you? Why don't you grab it and I'll let you?
Don't be throwing things.
I'll let you talk about it and we'll just, you're gonna just grab my pen and drop it.
That's a little loaded to the uh. What was that, a run or something?
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's at the school.
How how long of a run is it?
All right. Anything else for trustee Barks?
I was looking for volunteers too.
Yes.
If anybody has time to volunteer that day for an hour or two, uh whether it be manning the dunk tank or helping serve beverages.
Going through, yeah.
That would be amazing.
Yes, I will be sitting in the dunk tank, so people have asked. I will be there.
They asked me, so at least the gather.
Yes. So if you know anybody that wants to.
If it's eighty five or above, I'll I'll do a stint in the.
All right, all right.
Eighty five.
What if it's, what if it's eighty?
Yeah, I'm going first. I'm going first, guys. All right. Thank you, trustee Barks. Appreciate it. All right, we will move on to report on operations of the village, so I guess I'm I'm the first. I don't have a whole lot to talk about. We've got a lot of stuff coming up next week. Um one of which that I'm really excited for is midmarine municipal dinner. I think that's gonna be good. I don't know if everybody's RSVP'd or whatever. Anybody that can come, it's gonna be really neat. Um so looking forward to that. And then I guess the one question that I do want to ask, uh for those of you who were here last year, you do remember that we did a float in the flag day parade. That's where that beautiful uh American flag came from behind us. And actually, if if some of you might not know that we won grand champion in that parade last year, so we do have a title to defend. Um so I am wondering if that's something that we want to do again, and if so, we will sign up for a float. So if anybody is interested in doing it, I certainly will be, but I would love to not stand there by myself. So.
I'll stand next to you.
Oh, yeah?
I will hopefully decline this year.
Yeah, you're gonna be busy.
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
Oh, yeah, I just.
Yeah, make sure that. I don't know. When is it?
June ninth.
June ninth.
June?
Where are you going?
This is graduation.
Oh, yeah, that's.
June ninth, yeah, like. Yeah, Flag Day is on the fourteen, so they always do it the Sunday before.
So anyway, I'm not looking for anybody right now, but just keep it in in mind. I I plan on doing it, so I know Aaron's all excited to come up with another float design.
I will help downgrade whatever float if you guys choose, and I still have all the stuff from last year.
Awesome. All right, other than that, I don't have anything really, but a lot of busy stuff this summer, so we will just keep on rocking and rolling. We'll move on to our village administrator.
Right, well, I'll start off with this. I'm handing it out here. So we talked about last meeting about doing a mailer that. That highlighted our events and also the front of our exciting splash pad news. So if you if you were to kind of close, you would see that the white part is where the post is and your regret will begin, right? So that's how it's going to get delivered. And then you would open it up, or you could see the reverse splash, it sort of checked out, twenty three four ends. Open it up and then you see a very high level overview. We renamed events throughout the summer. You see a little tidbit about the splash pad down at the bottom, and then on the reverse side, that bottom portion can get torn off to then become a donation slip for those residents. It's still upside down, I know.
The trustee Barts had contact or connected me with a printer who was able to do it pretty much dirt cheap, which we appreciate. And we were able to generate mailing list for both the village and the surrounding town. Of of residents and property owners that we would mail to, so that's going to be going out fairly soon, so we can, again, drive up that interest in the events that we have coming up, so. Exciting stuff. I like how that turned out.
Like the picture of the kids in the mud.
I know, that's my favorite picture. I've used it so many times, just that sells it right there.
Yeah.
All right.
Like your son and the lot with that.
Yeah. It is.
I'll keep tracking along here. We we heard from Cruz Jack. They they keep doing great work down at the industrial park, which we appreciate. We did our first onsite visit with them. We have more to come and we look forward to getting those updates. From from them. PTS contractors, they just officially signed their contract, are the ones that are doing Highland Avenue. We've signed it on our end, and so now we're going to schedule a pre-construction meeting with them. They are currently doing work in Fort Washington, and so that delays their timing to come to us, which is a good thing when it comes to some of our events that we have going on. But they're planning a pretty aggressive construction period starting in July. During eight weeks, and they know that that road needs to, at least needs somewhat open for by the time school starts, so. We look forward to working with them on that. And for those who don't know, we had a minor water main break this week that happened to be on Highland. Which just adds to the reason why we are redoing that street. Let's see here, I think we're at the final stretches with Baker Telly. I feel like I've talked about that every every month over the last couple of meetings here. But we we feel like we're at a good place. We got journal entries on our twenty twenty three stuff that we have entered in there. We have Wendy, our auditor, coming in for a meeting in June to help us make sure that twenty twenty four is running pretty smooth. So we're hoping to have that pre-audit meeting or that the final audit meeting with her fairly soon, and then she normally gives her audit presentation to the full board around June. So just watch for that. On public safety and infrastructure, we talked about the the paramedic program. One thing I'll mention with Marshall Leit, for those who don't know, the Town of Fredonia struggles with code enforcement. So unlike us, they don't have a true code enforcement officer to help enforce their their ordinances. And they've been struggling to find what that what that nice solution is. So what the solution that actually Marshall Leit suggested is that we do some sort of intergovernmental agreement between the two municipalities. That allows on a case by case basis for our marshal to be that code enforcement officer for them. And the nice part is that it's no comes at no cost to them, because what they would end up doing is adopting. Our fine schedule and then we would collect that fine, so that would increase our municipal fine revenues. And the town would get actual code enforcement out of it. So just know that he's working on what that might look like to present to both bodies. And I appreciate his dedication to want to help out, you know, fellow community, so.
No, we're not going to patrol any of their roads.
No, no, it wouldn't be like we're patrolling, yeah. It'd be, hey, this person's in violation, go ticket them, kind of thing. Let's see here, we talked about the wastewater treatment plant. Board of review, open books, we had our board of review training. Open book was yesterday here for the village. We have steady stream of residents coming in, some that had scheduled appointments, some that just kind of walked in. And, you know, we expected that, and there might be some, you know, upset people who are are assessed values, and you guys all got your letters too, went up significantly. And, you know, by the natural instinct is to think that, oh, because my value of my home went up by sixty five percent, that means my taxes are going to go up by sixty five percent. Well, that's not how that works, and. So I give a lot of credit to the the other other Eric, who is our Eric Feeble, who is our assessor. He was able to answer a lot of great questions that the residents had, calm people down. And by the end of the day, we, everybody left without truly wanting to file a claim with the village, so. I'm sorry, there's one, okay. But again, for all the people that came in to have only one, that's a pretty good, it's a place to be at. So we'll handle those requests as they come in, and if there is truly somebody bringing a claim, that would get brought to the the board of review when when those guys meet. Let's see here, I talked about the mailer. We talked about the splash pad donation. I don't know if it's, I guess it's public news about Fredonia Lions. They they agreed to donate additional ten thousand to the project, which we're excited about with the splash pad. We did the Arbor Day celebration with NOSD, and then finally President Gerke and I visited Beauty Garden Salon for our business of the month. We had a great time. Getting to know Nicole beyond what she does here in the community here, learn about her business, her passion as a small Mississauga here in the community, which we appreciate. And we also snuck in our next business of the month, just this past week, just in case I happen to not be here.
Oh, yeah.
Later this month, so. And I guess I'll end my report with, I'm still here, so no babies yet. I'll keep you guys updated as that.
Yeah, the next business of the month, that one's pretty cool. That was probably.
Yeah.
That was one of my most fun ones to be on.
Now we're going to keep it quiet.
I never knew that they made so much stuff that was in my truck. Let's put it that way. It was just awesome. I'll also point out that we did have coffee with the village and that was that was fun last last Saturday as well. So we had a good turnout of people there. Great conversations, just stuff that we like to do to kind of some informal one on one with people, which is great. And it was, like I said, outstanding, a lot of people that were just asking good questions, wanted more information and. Left happy and more caffeinated, so.
Were there more people this time than last time?
I think so, actually. I think it is. Yeah.
With the splash pad, now, so the update on that is, we didn't know about the the ten thousand dollar donation from the Lions. So that's the update. It's, we get ten thousand dollars more.
Trickle in.
From the last.
There was two other smaller donations, one for a thousand dollars, one for two fifty, I think it was. Yeah, that's the one that I I dropped off by the friends group.
Except for two fifty?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
So about a little over eleven thousand dollars.
Yeah.
Hmm, yeah, and we've got some. Positive things going on with that as well. I don't know, I don't want to say too much, but we've got we've got some things that are in the works with that as well, so let's see.
Okay. And we had, we had a. A deadline with that by twenty, January twenty twenty five. Correct.
Uh.
December thirty.
Yeah.
No, it's under January twenty five.
November, January.
I was going to say something else.
Yeah.
The ride along program, I know. Previous trustee hasn't talked about that. Is that still going with the students or is that coming to a halt?
Well, it came to a halt with the end of the school year and then summer. They they just ended it a little early, and then this plan is to start it back up at fall.
Good program.
Yeah. Any questions of our administrator? All right, let's move along. We have the village marshal, report is in your packet.
He, Marshall Lee. Wanted us to know that he is promoting up the annuals to sergeant. Okay, start grooming him, just like Lee was promoted up and started to be groomed, so we'll be looking at. Swearing him in into this new position at the next month. That will be effective June first.
It's exciting.
Very exciting.
Succession plan.
All right. I mean, then you just start.
Yeah, I mean, we don't do that here.
Yeah. All right. And. Next, we have the fire chiefs report. That is also in your packet. If there's no questions on that, I'll move on right away to Public Works and Wastewater Treatment Plant. You know, Eric is not here. He's. Soccer, I think, that makes sense. So his report is in here as well.
So last meeting, we had talked about putting this on the agenda for tonight and to chat with Director Paulus on this. With the chip and seal happening, I understand that the schedule cannot be changed, so we're looking at June twenty fifth for that to be completed.
So in our talks and pleading with John and Grant of the county, the goal is that they're going to get it done as soon as they can, or early at the beginning of that week. Sweep as much of it off as they can, and we'll say a hope and a prayer, just hope that it's clean enough for.
Where?
Oh, Fredonia.
Fredonia. Yes.
Hmm, yeah.
Music in the park and on our fiftieth anniversary celebration.
Hmm, we all know that.
It'll be a pain.
This can be great.
Is that going to be a chip seal or a P ram?
Chip seal.
Okay, so at least that's quicker and it's better than the P ram you should hang around for months.
It's just going to be really, really dusty. And it's going to make the mouse.
But hey, we're not paying for it.
We're not paying for a public council. Like Wednesday. Everybody do your rain dance on the twenty sixth, please.
Yeah, I'm planning to be back for Wednesday.
Wednesday the twenty sixth?
Outside, yeah, can we get an announcement?
Yeah, I can do that. I'll work on that. So that that joke is never going to go away, is it? I'm always going to. All right.
You gotta watch your buck, watch out about times.
I know it, I know it. All right, we will move on to the clerk's report. That is also in your packet. She's not here tonight due to personal reasons. There's any questions on that report?
Can we just say kudos to her, even though she's not here, dealing with all the alcohol permitting that's been happening within the village?
Sure.
And the changes, she's handling it like a champ.
You're here.
Yeah, she is.
Yeah, that and the one hundred and fiftieth booklet too. I mean, that's been awesome, so. All right. We'll move on then to the treasurer's report. You are here, so if. Anything?
I am here.
Welcome back.
Welcome back.
I didn't take as much time as I should have. I came in to get the necessities done, but. We're catching up and. Back.
Awesome.
But you're going on vacation next week, so.
I am on vacation. Coming up soon.
Yes, you are. I got to write that down. All right. Um.
There is a report in there from the assessor.
Oh, good. Yes. That's what I was looking at. I didn't know if he was going to be here or not, but yes, there is. There is a report in here from the assessor. Any questions on that? All right, we will skip the Ozaki County District Two supervisor as he is not here. And we will go on to the Midmarine Municipal Association Designated Representative, or as we call it, Matter.
I don't think they had a meeting in May.
Okay, no meeting in May.
Yeah, you have dinner meeting this, I think they have one in June and that's it for the summer.
Perfect.
I think. They won't have that until like September or something.
All right.
Yeah.
All right, we will move on for items for discussion and or action. We already did the first two, so we are on the motion to approve extending park hours at Fireman's on Fireman's on June twenty ninth. That is for that one hundred and fiftieth anniversary celebration. What are we? Extending it to?
Band plays until eleven thirty. At least we were looking to extend it till midnight.
Okay. I'd entertain a motion on that.
I'll second that.
Yeah, we're sure they're not chasing everybody home at nine o'clock.
I don't think so.
Are you going to chase everyone home at night? You're going to stay and help me clean up again?
Yeah, I think we do that.
That's chasing these.
Oh, I'm not even going to go there. All right, we have a motion to second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Motion carries unanimously, thank you. And then we have a motion to approve CSM number twenty twenty four. Dash O two, which is for the Dance Studio.
Motion to approve CSM number twenty four O two.
Are there any questions on that from anybody? All right, if not, I'll call a question. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion carries. All right, and then we have the introduction of ordinance twenty twenty four dash O two floodplain management. So this is, again, this was before the Planning Commission. This is an extensive. Task that Michelle and the office in general had taken care of, updating our FEMA floodplain ordinance. Again, this is just an an introduction. This is for us to take a look at, and. If there's any questions, we can start chatting about that. Otherwise, I believe it will be back on our agenda for the first meeting in June for approval. So are there any questions of the ordinance as presented?
I understand this is long overdue, right? Because.
This is housekeeping.
Yeah, this happens from. Right.
They didn't do hardly any damage this time when they revamped it, so.
Yeah. Just made it longer.
They try and sneak stuff in there.
All right. If there are no questions, we will move on. We would need a motion to adjourn in a closed session pursuant to Wisconsin State Statute nineteen point eight five deliberating or negotiating the purchase of public properties, investing in public funds, or conducting other specified bu- public business. Whenever competitive or bargaining reasons require a closed session, consideration of offer to purchase of the southern portion of parcel. Number zero nine zero five zero zero five one two zero zero three, located at four fifty Billerlin.
And make a motion to adjourn for a closed session.
As per agenda.
As per agenda, thank you.
A second.
You want to repeat that whole thing?
Good for you. I have a motion in a second. We do need a roll call, so I will start on this on all those in favor.
Aye.
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 All right.
We think.
Yeah, let's do that. All right, we are in open session. Now looking for a motion about what we discussed in closed session.
I'll make a motion that we. Choose, our consideration was that we should offer to purchase the southern portion of parcel. Four nine oh five oh oh five one twelve oh three. Billerlin.
For the amount discussed in closed session?
Well, I suppose for for the. Let us discuss within closed session.
Love it. All right, I have a motion in a second. Any questions, concerns, compliments, anything else? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Motion carries unanimously, thank you. I do not believe we have any correspondence, and I personally have no items for future consideration. Anybody else? Going once, going twice, let's get out of here.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Uh, all was fair.
Aye.
Opposed, we are out of here at eight forty four. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. Not too bad, no, not for the length of the.
Three hours where the shift on end, how are you in forty by now?
Yeah.